All right. We call this regular meeting in Navasota City Council order on this the eighth day of April. The council chambers, let the record show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode. And visitors, if you would please sign in. And if you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in back and state your name and address at the podium as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Matt Cecil of First United Methodist Church, then followed by the pledges.
Good and gracious God, today we had the privilege to stand in awe and wonder at the power of your creation. The witness of storms and clouds, but also the witness of the solar eclipse. Lord, we are, we enjoy and we celebrate in who you are and what you have done here and now, even in our midst today. Lord, we ask your presence and your power to be in this place tonight so that we can be about the work of your city, so that we can be about the work of your community and the people within it. Lord, we invite that very power that blocks the sun to come in, to be a part, and to move within each of our words and each of our lives today. Lord, we ask your protection over our police officers and firefighters and emergency workers. We ask your protection over this sacred space so that we might go about your business. And we ask your blessings and your wisdom for those remarks that are shared tonight and the guidance over our city council and leaders as they work to do what is right and holy and good in your world. Lord, we pray all of these things and ask all of your blessings in your holy and wonderful name, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Why the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, y'all go to item number four, staff report, Mr. Weeks.
Mayor, members of council, I'm going to have Chief of Police Mike Myers come up and introduce a new member of our police department.
There you go. All right.
Mayor of City Council, Mike Myers, Chief of Police. This is the introduction of K-9 Diego.
He loves people.
What do you have on you, man? Diego's a six-year-old German Shepherd and Puritan from Poland. He was trained overseas and then in the United States at Pace Center K-9. Diego is a narcotics detection canine, for narcotics, article searches, and does limited tracking. Officer Drake is a certified canine handler and has worked with Diego for over five years. Their last certification passed in September 2023. So we added the canine. He's been with Officer Drake prior to Navasota PD, and it took a little bit for us to add him into our agency, buying the enclosure for the unit, which we put in Officer Drake's patrol unit, which was several thousand dollars because we have the cooling fans, the alerts when it gets summertime. So we had a few sponsors to assist in that, pay for part of it. The Western Club, RV Park, Navasota Concrete, and Elliott Ford pitched in donation, as well as Track Supply, Tex Fleet Outfitters, canines for cops, and Highway 30 Vet Services. Diego has been in the patrol car for about seven shifts, two weeks, and has already made three felony arrests.
All right.
I go around and ask for a bunch of donations and stuff because we wanted to keep it quiet till we introduce him to y'all. And now we're going to put him out there.
He's got his own camera, too.
Yeah.
Diego is not an apprehension dog, so he doesn't have bite built into him. So he's narcotics lawyer, article search. So as far as any type of liability, they care, no one is supposed to hide from you. You're supposed to see lots of people, lots of play with toys. So I won't say because they're supposed to say a lot of people, just because he's not trained to do that, so.
But if you walk or if you walk too close to his vehicle, he will let you know you're too close to his vehicle.
Yes.
Can I get you to be as protective of his territory as any dog would be? He's a handsome.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel, so one of the other things I want to make note is, so we don't necessarily have a canine unit. We have a patrol officer that has a canine as a partner, and so he has his own shift, not a specific shift, he's just his regular shift as a patrol officer. And so if there's a time when we need to bring him in for a special case or something like that, then it'll be overtime. And that way, we're not taking somebody off the streets specifically for this unit. He's actually a patrol officer that just happens to have a canine with him.
Smart.
So, thank you, Mike. Thank you, officer. Mayor, next, we're going to have John McKay come up and give you an update on our CIP projects.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John McKay, graduate engineer. Just a quick update on the CIP projects. I know y'all have seen lots of updates on Facebook on things. We are making good headway as of right now on the water tie-ins. So y'all know if our plan works this week, we'll have over 30 of them done in that area out of 40. So we're getting real close. Two major tie-ins are scheduled for next week along Washington, and we have not yet used all 10 valves that I'd asked y'all for in that workshop. So right now, we're looking at five to seven in that area.
Great.
So that, I still have to figure out Teague Street, so there still may be another one, but it's looking, it's looking good. The, as far as the concrete work and curb and gutter work that y'all are seeing going, that's the next step before paving. We're through, in that area, there's roughly 20 concrete aprons redoing the intersections with concrete that we're doing, and we're through eight of those. So we're over a third of the way done in that area with concrete aprons. And they continue, obviously, tomorrow's going to be a rainy day. They're not going to do any, they're not even planning on being here tomorrow. Wednesday, we're still looking at, but we're hitting it pretty heavy. I'm hoping, here's the words everyone's been hoping to hear, I'm hoping by the end of the month, if these tie-ins next week go in well, that should be a good time to be seeing the asphalt work actually starting. So if next Tuesday goes well, that's where we're, we're looking.
Is there, is it, is the, that, there's a point right in front of the Horlock House on Washington Avenue that everybody seems to dodge because it's a pretty good-sized bump. Is that part of a tie-in to all the CIP or is it?
No, right, right by, by the Horlock House, there's an old line out in the middle of Washington that we're, we're still trying to track down good documentation on, but that's separate.
Okay.
That's actually, by the Horlock House, you saw a pit get dug a little while ago. That's one of our new valves that went in, right there in the yard of the Horlock House. And then there's another one right there at the curb that's the...
I'm talking about right on Washington Avenue?
Correct.
Okay.
So that, those aren't part of the CIP project.
I docked it every morning.
I thought that was a leak that was there that got patched.
So it is, it is scheduled to have a repair, a leak on that valve, and it does need to be raised so when they go back, you won't have that dip. So it will be more flush to the concrete. The valve is too low. That's why there's that dip.
That's that hillside, right? Or, no?
No, it's on Washington.
On Washington, yeah.
It's leaking, it's too low.
Yeah.
So it needs to be raised up. So we have to raise that valve up, you know, and then that, that will fix that.
Yeah, I just figured it was waiting to be, obviously, you don't want to replace the pavement till it's fixed, you know, it makes sense, but I was curious.
Any other questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
You. Any board commissioner reports from council?
Yes, I did fill in for Councilman Foltz on the P&amp;Z on last Thursday. They had three items on the agenda. All three passed was the Performa Site Plan, rezoning for PWP Land Company, and the O'Reilly Site Plan. The P&amp;Z approved all three of those.
Any other report? Okay.
Last week, I attended the Texas Historical Commission's Real Places Conference with the Assistant City Manager and our new Marketing Director and Coordinator, and I think that we came back with a lot of information that will help Navasota better utilize its historical significance while continuing to move forward to help with the downtown. We attended a all-day downtown revitalization workshop to, to better understand the Main Street program, which is something the city has strove for. And so I think we, we came home with a better grasp of that. We learned more about grassroots efforts on how to get the community involved and, and the preservation projects that we work on. We learned about tax credits, historic tax credits, so that people that own historic buildings, that they want to do renovations, they can receive money from the state to help them do so. That will help alleviate some of the major costs. And we heard from some really great speakers about historical projects across the United States, including Route 66, and how they gained their funding, and all of the different things that they went to in their trials and their tribulations and how they overcome. And I think that it really, I don't know, it gave me a really good sense of that Navasota is on the right track on all of our historical projects, and I think we've got some good ideas to help with the Horlock House and, and downtown, of course, the heart of all of it. So I think it went well. I, I think, Kristen, we all attended separate sessions, so each of us came home with all kinds of different information. Yes, yes. So I'll meet with the City Manager tomorrow and give him all my notes and all the contacts and all of the information so that someone can move forward with, with all of that.
Great.
So thanks for sending us.
Glad y'all were able to do that. All right, well, this week is National Library Week. I've got activities all week. You can go to their Facebook page to find out all the things that are going on there. Wednesday is Coffee with the Chamber. It's at Classic Rock at 9:00 AM. Navasota ISD is having their second-to-the-last rattle session tonight, actually, but the next one will be on the 16th of April at the Navasota Center at 6:30 for, to discuss the bond proposal. Next farmer's market's coming up April 13th. The 18th is the Navasota ISD Education Foundation Banquet, featuring Gina Norris as the Speaker. And there are still tickets available for that. Art Market coming up at the PA Smith Hotel on the 20th of April. And some great things going on at the school district. The Navasota High School soccer team is going to the state finals for the first time ever, actually going to the semifinals this Wednesday. And hopefully, we'll play Friday. If they do play and win Friday, they'll be state champions. So anyway, we'll get through, let's get through Wednesday first and see what happens. But it's, congratulations to them on their efforts with the soccer team. Also, the Little Dribblers, Grimes County Little Dribblers, went to the national tournament, and the major boys were the national champions, and the junior boys were in third place. So there were some major champions there from Navasota at the national tournament in Mahalia here last week. And then, on, on the side of Career and Tech, the Skills USA competition, the Career Tech, we had three students were state champions at the, from Navasota High School at the Skills USA event, and they will be going to nationals. So it's pretty exciting.
Mayor, also, I want to remind everybody, on April 27th is Keep Navasota Beautiful Trash Off Event.
Yep.
We've got that going on from 8:00 AM to around noon. So be sure to sign up for that. I know that Kristen's got a lot of cool kids activities that she's going to be passing out, and get the hot dogs and all that fun stuff for the kids. And also, we're looking forward to who can, who can gather the, I guess, the weirdest, I can't remember what we call it, but there is a, there is a couple of awards that we give for whatever the weirdest thing that people find throughout their, their event.
Have been some weird ones.
Yeah, yeah. Also, on the reports from city staff, there's partying here. We can make notes or reminds of upcoming events organized or sponsored by the city. I'm going to ask the Examiner rep, Connie Clements, to come up, although that we're not, the city's not sponsoring it and we're not organizing. We are hosting at this location event that I'd ask her to come up and give some details to the public.
Good evening. On Wednesday, April 18th, here in City Council Chambers, the Examiner will be hosting a candidate forum for city council members and the candidates for Precinct 3-4 Constable. So we invite the public to come out. You can submit questions through Friday to Anna Casino Mize at the Examiner. And we encourage everybody to come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any other comments.
I have one more thing that, that I had just remembered when the Examiner came up. I was approached two weeks ago, roughly, by a friend of mine that works for the county, and they are working on what they call, they want a new slogan for the county. And it's going to be coming out, and there's going to be a contest, and it'll be in the newspaper, and it'll be part of the Best of the Brazos, and everyone will be asked to submit their, their ideas for the new slogan. Since we're no longer really the land of milk and honey, we just have a lot of honey. We're low on milk these days. So, so y'all be putting your little creative hats on, and that contest will be a fun one. For, it'll be Best of the Grimes County. It'll be in the newspaper.
Cool. Thank you. That's all I got, Mayor.
They can't have so much so close, that's...
This is county-wide, so we're, we're trying to get, grasp the whole county.
I got you.
The election's coming up for the city and including our charter revisions, and that'll be on the 4th of May, the early, early voting starting on the 22nd to the 26th of April, and then again on Monday, the 29th and 30th. And that's, that's just for the local elections, and then the runoffs, I think, for the other ones are like the 20s.
28.
28 or something, yeah.
Yeah, and counsel, just so you'll know, Legal got with us this, this weekend. Of all the publications, we've got to do two sets of publications in the Examiner for our charter election, and so it'll, it's quite lengthy, so that'll be coming out.
Next week, next week.
Next week and the following week. And then, staff will be putting together some Facebook posts so we can start updating the public on some of that charter election information, so make it a little bit more simpler for them to understand. So that'll be coming.
I think the chamber posted in their newsletter a sample ballot, I believe.
Yeah, I think so, too.
They can reference that as well, I guess.
So all my thunder for next week.
We will move to item number five. This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony regarding a zoning change application submitted to City of Navasota by PWP Land Company LLC for the property located in the A0055-0 D Tyler Abstract adjacent to State Highway 105 West. Zoning change application requests to change the zoning from Ag Open Space District to B1 General Business. Property affected is legally described as A0055-0 D Tyler Track 4 through 6, 7.251 acres, R number 77990, located in Navasota, Grimes County, Texas.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Lupe Diostato, Development Services.
Excuse me, Lupe, you need to open the...
Oh, yeah, open the hearing at 6:19.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
As mentioned, Mayor, the applicant, PWP Land Company, is requesting a zoning change from Ag to B1 General Business. This property was annexed in September of 2021 and has since been AO the entire time. The current property owner is anticipating commercial development in the near future once all of the abutting residential development takes off and is complete. And so he wants to go ahead and get ahead of that and change it to commercial to allow for more opportunities. Jay Boland is here to represent the application. Mr. Hammack, that was at P&amp;Z meeting last Thursday when they approved the recommended approval for the zoning change. He couldn't make it tonight, but Mr. Boland is here if y'all have any questions. One thing to note is the proposed zoning change is in line with Planning and Zoning Commission's Future Land Use Workshop that they held back in 2021. So all of that area is slated and recommended to be commercial, and so it is in line with P&amp;Z's Future Land Use Plan.
Any certain type business that's being considered at this point, or is it just not known?
Not known at this point.
There was a suggestion that there would be, might be a urgent care center there particularly appealing because of the problems with the railroad cutting the city in half. It doesn't solve the problem, but it takes a little bit of the edge off anyway.
I think somebody just asked that specific thing as a question, not that it was...
Not that anybody was really saying that's what was going to happen, but...
I'd like to support it, though.
You can say it that way, yes.
Correct, and B1 will allow a use like that.
Or like a, like a strip center or something along that line.
Yeah, can do a lot with seven acres.
Yeah. So describe it, describe the spot just for the public's interest on...
Yes, so the seven acres is located on Highway 105 West. It is directly east of Pecan Lakes Drive. That's the new concrete road that leads into Pecan Lakes. So right now, where they have all the road tore up, they're doing the turning lanes, it's a long stretch of roadway on the left-hand side.
Navasota side.
Yeah, on the Navasota side. Yes, sir.
How's that going to look with all of, so he, he has one entrance?
He has two.
But one that's going to be part of a street, a thorough street, right? So how many, how many turns is that off of that section of 105? Because now there's three for Pecan Lakes, including the county road, and then additional two more?
Correct, and that's part of the big reason why the turning lane was developed. Matter of fact, this property owner was a partner in, in that whole conversation with Tech Stop. And so the turning lane, it's almost, you know, chicken and egg kind of situation where, where he was a big proponent of the turning lanes, which are very needed.
But he's already, already factored in as a...
Correct. Yep, he was instrumental in getting the turning lanes done.
What's happening with the lighting out there? I mean, I know that we talked about there was an issue with the county road lighting and then the one in the middle that they're still, I guess, working to get, working to get lampposts or something?
So, so Tech Stop did put a light at the intersection of Pecan Lakes and 105. I'll let Lupe address the developers' things out there because I don't think, they're, they're still, the whole Phase 4 has no lights, and that has to do with ordering of the light.
Yeah, there's just some supply issues with lights, and I think they're finally, I think this week, they're, they're going to be finishing with Phase 4 lighting, finally.
But whatever he does out there, the commercially will be of help for lighting on that whole strip.
Correct. Mainly at, at every intersection, there should be a light. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're correct. There will be a, there'll be a turn lane that comes directly into this development and will go through and connect to Pecan Lakes, will be Pecan Grove subdivision. And then there'll be another turn lane that will come in and connect just to the strip center, whatever it's going to be there, but it will not have a connection to the development, according to what the developer...
The latest drawings.
The current latest drawings we've had.
Yeah. It's fluid.
And the letters went out to all of those folks that this would affect, and you didn't get any response?
Correct, yes, sir. The state law is 200, however, Navasota notifies 500 feet, and so no, no feedback.
Sir, would you like to address anything, or are you okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to address in this hearing?
Timber Richardson, 1202 Lane Street. I'm not asking for any changes, but just to keep things certain, the lighting in mind. I've been reading a lot about the dark sky projects where, you know, as you build up, you block, basically block out the stars. A lot of people can't see the Milky Way. And I'm not asking for any changes or any ordinances or anything like that, but if it were possible, as new developments come in, if you could mention that as something that would be a good thing, I believe. Thank you.
I think, Lupe, that's already something that's considered, right?
Yes, that's right. We do require a, at a minimum, cutoff shield so it doesn't shine up.
Okay, all right, well, we'll close the hearing at 6:26.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1044-24.
Second. Motion by Mr. Foltz, second by Mr. Gessner to approve on first reading ordinance 1044-24, amending the official zoning map, City of Navasota to rezone following property from Ag Open Space District to B1 General Business District, 7.251 acres in Navasota, Grimes County, Texas. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And then, item carries. Item number six, consideration impossible action on the first reading of ordinance 1043-24, amending Chapter 3 Building Regulations, Article 3.02 Technical and Construction Codes and Standards, Division 5 Electricity, Part 5 Electrical Code and Technical Requirements of the Code of Ordinance, City of Navasota, Texas.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Nick Koski, building official, City of Navasota. I come to you this evening in consideration and possible action on amending Chapter 3 Building Regulations to include subsection 8. Currently, we are in the 2020 NEC of adopted codes, and it came to my attention from a few developers that they were having some changes that they would like to see in the 2023 NEC. They wanted to try and bring that into play, and I told them, I said, well, we're in the, currently in the 2020. And when I say those changes, I'm talking in regards to peninsula, peninsulas and island plugs. So currently, in the 2020, we have, in any islands or peninsulas, you have to have, of course, an outlet, long story short. And in the 2023, the current NEC, it says that you, that plugs are not required anymore, but you have to have the provisions for them in a cabinet. So I had an electrician that basically didn't want to put them in because of the liability. I guess there's been some injuries from young children pulling crock pots. He told me about a rice, like a pressure cooker, a fish tank even, one of them was pulled over on a small child, and I guess they were injured. So tonight, I come before you to, we will, what I'm proposing is to stay with the 2020 that we currently are in, but give them the option, an additional option, to use the 2023, which would be the deletion of the plugs. Because I still want to keep some of the developers that want those plugs, I guess you could say, happy with that, and then also with the 2023, the ones that are worried about the liability, also keeping them happy. So trying to find a happy medium for both of them. So that's why I'm looking to drop this subsection 8 in, that basically, like I said... So that's why I'm looking to drop this subsection 8 in, that basically, like I said, you can follow your 2020 with the plugs, or you can do the 2023 with the deletion.
I don't understand how it would be the builder's liability if they put in a plug and an owner buys it and then puts a pressure cooker or something, and their kid pulls it off. Why is it, how does that change the liability? It seems like, it seems as though that would not fall onto the home builder.
Yeah, well, so the electrician is the one that sparked it up, not the home builder, totally. He didn't want the liability, and he probably, he didn't give me the background on why he was so nervous on it. But it probably was someone that he knew or himself that maybe got wrapped up into some kind of liability lawsuit, whatever it may be on that, for injuries. So I've always, like, with the 2020, having the plugs in there, I've always thought, you know, because the reason that the NEC put that in in the 2020 was, what do people normally use those islands for around the holidays? Cutting your turkey, electric knives, those types of things. And with that, instead of plugging it in behind yourself, and then you've got a cord stretching over, and you have young children running by that could snag the cord and cause injury to yourself, that's why with me putting this in for either way, it kind of like gives them the choice of, if they feel comfortable not putting them in, or they feel comfortable putting them in. It's kind of a happy medium for both parties. But like I said, it was the electrician that brought this up that was kind of like, "I don't want to put these plugs in."
Yeah, it sounds to me really like that somebody wants to just do the cheapest way possible. That's really what it sounds like to me.
And that's what I thought, too, but, and that was the first thing that, you know, kind of hit my mind, was, eh, looking to get out of it, you know, trying to limit costs and so on and so forth. But he actually was going to a more expensive method. I told him, I said, "Well, at this point, if, you know, of course, there's a formal process, which we're at right now to get this changed." But until then, I said, "You have to have plugs to follow our current code." And he actually was ready to put in pop-ups, there are outlets that are in the granite that pop up, and they are quite expensive compared to just your standard outlet, you know, with, basically, you're still gonna have the provisions in there, that short little piece of wire in that outlet that's on the side, that doesn't cost that much to put in. It really doesn't. But he was actually willing to put pop-ups in, just for that liability reason. So that kind of, at first, I thought about the cost factor, but when he was talking about, "Not a problem, I'll put the more expensive thing in," that kind of made me feel a little different on that.
So if he had went with the 2023, you would have turned him down?
What was that? I'm sorry.
I said, "If he had went with the 2023, you would have not passed him?"
So if we were currently in the 2023, he wouldn't have to put any outlets at all on it. The only thing that the 2023 lists is, is called a J-box, a junction box, that would be in the cabinet for provisions if the owner ever wanted to add those later. So literally, the wire is pulled, it's already tied into the circuit, and it's sitting there in a box that's sealed up inside, so if later, let's say you bought, you purchased a home, and you said, "You know what? I want to have a plug on this island or multiple plugs," you can then have an electrician tie into that box that's there.
I think what the council member Harris is asking is, if you went out there and the plug was not there, would you have failed them?
Yes, because we are currently in the 2020. That is correct.
So you're just wanting to add to 2023, keep the 2020 like it is, but you want to kind of update the plan?
Yes, sir, that is correct. It will give them the option of staying with the 2020, of putting the plugs in, which is our adopted code ordinance at the current time, or they can do the 2023, which is the deletion of the plug.
But it still requires, if you'll look here in the actual ordinance, it's section Section 2, I guess it's the second paragraph, it says, in the middle of the sentence, "If a receptacle outlet is not provided to serve an island or peninsula, countertop or work surface, provision shall be supplied at the island or peninsula for future addition," so as he just mentioned. Though you might delete the plug itself, you still have to do the work so that if the homeowner at some other point wants to add it, that they can.
Just so you don't have to break through the slab to get.
Correct, the pipe would be there, wire would be pulled.
But then it becomes safe if the homeowner decides to.
Well, the homeowners, I mean, if I decide I want to do it, it's on my, I'm liable for it, then.
It does seem remote, because if it's required by code, then how is the electrician gonna be liable? But I could see some plaintiffs appearing, being very creative, and like, "You should have foreseen that this could happen, that, you know, somebody's gonna plug in a cord there, and, you know, an accident was going to occur." But if it's required by code, it does seem remote.
Sue for any.
I haven't researched, you know, the case history on.
Because I'm looking at a microphone right here that's like plugged into the granite, and I'm sure there's a plug under here, so seems like that would be, they would just do that. I don't know. It's weird that the government has a regulation that says that you can or can or whatever. I don't know. It seems weird.
This, we'll leave it up to the homeowner, and it's even more like they're making an affirmative decision to install it, and, you know, then it becomes their decision and a lot more their action that created the, you know, potential liability.
Or just more money. Yeah.
Are these receptacles horizontally mounted or vertically?
It can be either or. They could be horizontal or vertical on the side of the peninsula or island.
Yeah, it's not specified in here, although they do refer to countertops and work surfaces.
Yeah, you can also use the pop-ups that I was talking about, which is a waterproof or water-resistant assembly that mounts in the granite. You push it, it then pops up and opens up, so that way you can plug things in and then close it when you're done. But they are quite expensive, the assembly itself, and of course, insulation of cutting the granite and everything else.
Yeah. It just depends on what your countertop looks, so is your countertop flat? It could be on the sides, it could be, I mean.
I just mix my eggs on a slanted top.
So again, council, you've asked myself and staff to bring you things that helps us be more builder-friendly and want to be pro-developer. This is just something that our building officials noticed out in there and has been asked if something could be changed, and so we don't think.
So I also want to protect the buyer and that they're not gonna have to get nickelled and dimmed for something that they would expect that would be in their cabinetry. I mean, that's.
I would assume it'd be like getting your windows tinted when you buy a new car, go, "I ain't driving that thing off a lot until you tint the windows. I'm not buying that house until you put a plug in right there."
And I will put it in, but it's gonna be another $1,000. And they're like, "Oh, no, we can't afford that." I mean, I just, but you know where this leads, right? I mean.
The usual fact is that, particularly on a peninsula one, you would put the plug up in the wall above it.
Mine's on the side.
These are on the side.
They're on the side.
Or you can have them on the top, which are called the pop-ups. Yeah.
It's a freestanding island that doesn't have any walls.
Right. Well, I said on the peninsula. Okay.
So, yeah, like I said, this will just give a flexibility of, you know, either option. We can either follow the 2020 that we're currently in, or we can go to the 2023, you know, either or.
If we change up, we can't go back?
That is correct. That's why I'm giving the option of this.
Because it would be interesting to see what happens, how many people start cutting out, actually putting them in.
Yeah, if we moved into the 2023, then we would be bound by exactly what I'm doing right now, you know, 100%. Can't go backwards.
It's a marketplace, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1043-24, amending Chapter 3 Building Regulations, Article 3.02 Technical and Construction Codes and Standards, Division 5 Electricity, Part, Technical, Technical Requirements of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Navasota. Thank you. I didn't trip on that one at all.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor for the ordinance 1043-24?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item number seven, consent agenda. We have the minutes for March, municipal court report for March, second reading of ordinance 1041-24, amending Chapter 10 subdivision regulation, Article 10.02 subdivision ordinance, Exhibit 10A subdivision's development ordinance, Article 7, requirements for improvement, reservation and design of the Code of Ordinances, City of Navasota, amending section 7.03 streets, 7.08.04 utility location standards, and 7.13 regulation of cluster mailbox units.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes, municipal court report for March, and second reading of ordinance 1041-24.
Second. Motion by Mr. Guest, and second by Mr. Fulton, to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? See none, item carries. Who did I say it is? No. Okay, we have adjourned.